Good evening, everyone. This February 27th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board is now in session. As you can tell from the header, we are having, this is our first budget work session preceded by a public hearing on the budget. With that, let's do some of the basics, and first is a roll call. Why don't we start with you, Ms. Schmidt?
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Isabel Wong, Albemarle High School.
G. Lee, Rivasna District.
Allison Spillman, at-large representative.
Graham Page, Millau District.
Kaye Dacuff, Jack Jewitt District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Leslie Pryor, Rio District.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Erin Stone, Assistant School Division Council.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Patrick McGlaughlin, Assistant Superintendent.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. And now we'll pause for a moment of silence. Next item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Did you get that, Ms. Thompson?
I'm sorry, no.
It was moved by Ms. Lee, seconded by Ms. Spillman to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to approve the agenda is passed. The next item of business is the public hearing, and Ms. Osborne will read the rules of, for the speakers tonight.
We welcome public input at our school board meetings. To sign up to speak during the public comment period, you can do so in several ways. Online, sign up is available from 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. By phone, you can call the school board clerk's office to sign up until 2:00 p.m. on the meeting day. And in person, you can sign up at the meeting. That's available from 6:00 p.m. until the public comment period, which is right now. Please note that public comment is not received at special board meetings unless specified on the agenda. Each speaker will have three, two minutes tonight to speak, but the chair with the board consent may reduce his two minutes should there be 14 or more speakers. And we have 18, so chair, we are, will be at the two-minute mark.
Thank you.
The maximum number of people or groups that may speak at a meeting is 20. In the event that there are more than 20 people or groups who wish to speak at a particular meeting, each speaker will be assigned a number, and numbers will be drawn to determine which people or groups will have the opportunity to speak. Those who do not have the opportunity to speak at a particular meeting may sign up to speak at a subsequent meeting and/or may submit written comments for the school board's consideration. Speakers should state your name and either your address or your voting district, address comments to the school board as a whole, and limit comments to school board governance or school division operations, and you can provide written statements and supporting material to the clerk. The school board will use a timer to track each speaker's time. Speakers are asked to wrap up their comments by the end of the three-minute, two-minute mark. To maintain respect, please refrain from clapping or other audible forms of support. You may raise your hand instead. Debate with the school board is not allowed, and the projection system is for staff presentations only. I will tell you, the first three speakers will be Catherine Jerry, Mark Sikoli, and Lauren Williamson.
Go ahead.
So, okay, wait a second. Is this a public hearing on the budget, or are we limited to talking about budget only?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do I click it, or does someone else click it?
You may begin.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Kate Gary. I am a third-grade teacher at Broadus Wood, which is in the Whitehall District. I'm a Golden Apple recipient, Teacher of the Year nominee, and the Division's 2023 Equity Educator of the Year. I'm here tonight to speak for the instructional staff of Broadus Wood, all of whom signed the letter I'm about to read. Many of them are here tonight with me. We wrote this letter to urge you to reconsider the decision to eliminate the FLESS program. We believe it's a mistake. We understand that there are budgetary shortfalls. We saw Ellie Schott's program listed on a list next to furniture expenses and field trip costs, and we believe it is reductive of the profoundly human work that she has done at our school. Her FLESS program has been transformative. As families and students will share tonight, it brings us closer as a school community and better academically. Through FLESS, the world has become bigger, the school has become more joyful, and our students have noticed. This is what schools should feel like for our kids, and watching this happen is why we became educators. Broadus Wood received the Virginia's Board of Education's highest achievement award last year, and we believe FLESS was directly responsible for part of this. Research shows that students with good content knowledge perform better on standardized assessments, and Senorita Schott makes less time content linked. Students tell me when I ask them that this is what they love about her lessons. We were proud when the Division emailed to reaffirm our commitment to efforts that bring a sense of belonging, safety, and well-being for all. Senorita Schott's instruction is a tangible way in which we have been realizing this. We watch our native Spanish speakers blossom and become leaders in our classroom and the FLESS environment, and the concrete way that this program communicates our belief that all children bring something valuable to our community is powerful. Our kids understand that, and they will understand the message it sends if we cancel it as well. We think that the elimination of the FLESS program is a step away from our values of providing anti-racist equitable education for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Sikoli, you can correct me if I mispronounce your name.
No, that's good. Thank you. Mark Sikoli, and I live in the Whitehall District of Albemarle County with two children in our public schools. I'm a professor at UVA and Director of the Program in Linguistics. I focus my comments here on the educational and cognitive gains for children learning a second language in elementary school, and how cutting the FLESS program would harm students by removing these benefits. I'd like to quote just a few of the many studies. A 2021 paper showed elementary language learning has a profound impact on children's cognitive development, enhancing executive functions, problem-solving skills, and academic performance. Second language learning expands vocabulary, improves grammar and sentence structure, enhances pronunciation, and boosts writing and reading proficiency in both students' first and second languages, so better English with a second language. 2018 study demonstrated academic gains in all subject areas, including English language arts, mathematics, science, and social studies by students who have participated in language programs. Learning a second language makes a positive impact on memory and the ability to focus and multitask, and bilingualism delays the onset of Alzheimer's disease. Rather than peripheral to a core, the authors conclude that second language learning should be central in the curriculum of every school. Another study showed that early learning of a second language correlates with higher salaries as adults. Cutting the FLESS program will remove these educational gains and will decrease students' ability to succeed in post-secondary education and STEM and other fields. Linguistic research also demonstrates the best time in life to learn a language is as a child because of the critical language acquisition period before puberty. Adolescents and adults have a far more difficult time and often fail to reach fluency. It's no consolation to tell us that students will still have second languages in middle and high school because cutting FLESS removes the gains that would help them succeed there. We should rather be expanding the FLESS program as it is a keystone program improving outcomes across the curriculum. Please do not defund the FLESS program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sikoli. Laura Williamson?
It'll just start.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. I'm Laurel Williamson from the Whitehall District, and my kids attend Broadus Wood Elementary School. Six days ago, we learned that the Foreign Language in Elementary Schools program, or FLESS, is proposed to be cut from next year's budget. This program started in Albemarle about 10 years ago and came to Broadus Wood three years ago with Spanish instruction. Our beloved Senorita Schott teaches all 265K through 5 students, and I can't tell you how blown away I have been by how much the kids have soaked up in such a little time, bringing home new phrases and songs week over week. With the FLESS program, I think that Albemarle County has discovered the secret ingredient to truly absorbing a second language: start young. Start young when learning language is so much easier instead of waiting until middle or high school. Does it really make sense to cut the most efficient avenue of second language instruction that these kids will ever have? By my count, over 1,400 kids currently receive FLESS instruction in the county, and it's unfortunate that the FLESS program hasn't yet reached all the elementary schools as was originally planned. But does that mean we should give up now? Now when second language and cultural fluency are even more needed than in the past. My kids and I attended last year's Spanish multicultural night at the school, and it was on that night that I got a glimpse at the spark of pride and belonging in the eyes of classmates and their parents who are native Spanish speakers, helping lead the way on this school-wide language learning journey. As someone who went to school as a young child in a language and culture not that of my family, I recognize that spark, when even if just briefly, you can use your home language and experience two-way communication. I realize that balancing the budget is a difficult task, but I urge the board to recognize the obvious and the subtle impacts the FLESS program has on our school communities and our broader community. Please don't give up on FLESS now.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Lillian Lessick, Rebecca Tichner, and Ashley Spinelli.
We live in Whitehall District, and we go to Broadus Wood Elementary School. We are here tonight to state why we believe FLESS should stay in elementary schools. When I was in kindergarten, I only knew one word in Spanish, "hola." Then throughout the years, Senorita Schott, my Spanish teacher, taught me the feelings from maltoinfado, that means from bad to sick, and the alphabet to ah to z, that means h to z. In second grade, we had someone who transferred from Mexico. If Spanish was not here, we would not have been able to have conversations with her like we do now. Hola, ¿cómo estás? Está bien, ¿y tú? Está excelente, adiós. Senorita Schott gave us the tools we needed so we could speak to our friends even if they speak a different language. We bought a poster that we made for people to sign if they want FLESS to stay at our school. As you can see, everyone loves FLESS. Can you please try harder to find the money to keep FLESS? Thank you for your time, and please let FLESS stay. We have one song.
Adiós, mis amigos, adiós.
Next, we have Heidi Gilman Bennett, Emily Mathon, and Donna Gray. And you are not required to sing.
Sorry, my bad. Lost track. You guys are great.
State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Ashley Spinelli.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's, it was my bad. I was so happy when I moved here nearly a decade ago and got an email that my daughter would be part of the first FLESS class at Ivy Elementary. As a former military family, my oldest went to four elementary schools by the time he was in fourth grade, so we know elementary schools. This was the only one that was so forward-looking and progressive that it provided a foreign language program. When our school board brought us this program, they built something great for us. They enriched our children's education and leveled up our school district. But for some reason, now out of 280-plus million dollars of things in the budget, you selected this as something that should be cut. If you cut this, you're not just cutting a line item, you're cutting something incalculably precious that you know we're never going to get back. I know that's not what you want your legacy to be, a board that chisels away the gems that make our schools shine. I know you guys want to build something with us. Please, keep this program. Take your time, and when you can, expand it. All of our schools should have it. I've been told it's fair to cut FLESS because it's just in a handful of schools. I know it wasn't the intention, but that's really insulting. We're not just a number. That handful contains my children, their friends, their neighbors. Don't punish them for being in a smaller program. We already know that our schools have the lowest funding per pupil in the county, by quite a lot in some cases. I totally understand that other schools have different needs, and I don't care if it's all equal, but please don't put all these cuts on our children's backs. Don't make our schools the sacrificial lamb of Albemarle County. Wait to buy textbooks, wait to expand other programs. Please don't take away our teachers' jobs and this incredibly precious program. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I also skipped Ms. Rebecca Tichner.
She said she was not going to.
Okay.
Heidi Gilman Bennett, Samuel Miller District. I'm here on behalf of Family Counsel's Chair. First, some frustration that we have as a public one single opportunity to express our comments on the proposed budget compared to the county giving 16 separate opportunities for the public to express opinions and engage on the budget. So forgive my lack of poetry. I'm going to go quickly, focusing on the five "Learning for All" proposals. First, yes to compensating educators and staff, also to hiring bus drivers and English learner teachers. Second, yes to the bellwether instructional priorities. So many students continue to be so far behind in reading and math, and these are investments that ACPS teachers, educators, have been requesting for many years. It's great to see them here, and please, in the future, listen to our educators who are serving our most needy students sooner. Third, the intensive support center, yes to improvements to supporting special education services, including TA compensation and more. However, I'm frustrated to hear that CAC has not been consulted prior to sharing this detailed proposal. Fourth, scholar studios, I repeat the concern over multiple years by Family Counsel that while the instructional approach is potentially interesting, the actual enrollment is extremely low. Why make such a huge investment, including in a principal and admin for Center 2, when the demand isn't there and the program isn't even open? I urge you to ask for actual enrollment numbers for next year. Given massive overcrowding at AHS, the space is desperately needed. Fifth, SROs. I'm deeply frustrated again about the lack of transparency since this SRO program was reintroduced without any public input. Yes, the public demands to feel safe at school, but I'm concerned that this expansion isn't based on actual need. Do these SROs receive training on working with students with autism, students with mental health crises? Do they cooperate with ICE? We have so many questions, and urge transparency and more information on community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Mathon from the Rio District. I'm speaking to you tonight about the budget proposal shared by Dr. Haas about the school resource officers. I'm writing, I'm speaking to voice my frustration and concern over the increase in spending to hire two additional law enforcement officers to be placed in our high schools. In the summer of 2020, many of you who still sit on the school board made the case for removing school resource officers from our schools. In the July 2020 meeting, you all approved a resolution acknowledging that the research is not definitive or conclusive with regard to the question of whether police presence in schools results in safer school environment conducive to learning where students are more likely to thrive. Another part was acknowledged, some data suggests that students of color and students with disabilities are disproportionately arrested for school-related incidents, and that criminalization of school behaviors contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. Also, it was noted that it's essential for all of our students to feel safe at school and are treated equitably and with dignity and respect in accordance with the terms and intent of the ACPS anti-racism policy. The school board directed the superintendent to develop new protocols. Now some of these new protocols in the form of safety coaches are being slashed from the budget. In 2023, many of you who still sit on the board unanimously approved the budget that paid for one SRO without any public acknowledgement or discourse on the reintroduction of this officer at Albemarle High School. The MOU, not publicly available, leaves many questions as to the rights of students and their families, as well as questions about the training, accountability, and monitoring of the progress of this impactful role. In the spring of 2023, Bellwether published their report, whose purpose was to ensure systematically marginalized young people achieve outcomes that lead to fulfilling lives and flourishing communities. In this report, Black and Latinx students describe being overly scrutinized and disproportionately disciplined for their behavior. I urge you to reject this increase in police presence at our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Gray, Jennifer Bucket, and Meg Phillips.
Hi, my name's Donna Gray.
Can you move the mic closer to you?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. No, move me closer to the mic. Thank you. My name's Donna Gray. I'm a graduate of Albemarle High School, class of 1969, and a fifth-generation Charlottesville Albemarle resident. I've seen a lot of change. Today, we have violence in our schools like I never experienced, even in the '60s. The most heinous thing was the rape that happened in the boys' locker room just a couple years ago. With all that's happening, not just in the world, but in our own county, it's obvious that we need more protection for our students at school. I've personally met parents who have kids at Albemarle High School, their kids race to the bathroom when they get off the bus in the afternoon because they're afraid to use the bathrooms at school. I'm not making this up. I've also met parents who students say there are certain hallways they won't, they won't walk down in school because there are people who should be in class that are just hanging out there posing a menacing danger. There's a big difference between safety coaches and a school resource officer, and yes, they are especially trained to work with the kids in school to answer somebody else's question. These two positions are not interchangeable in any way. A counselor might be able, a safety coach, might be able to help someone after a violent event has already occurred. A resource officer has the ability to stop a violent event before it begins. I believe our ever-increasing property taxes should be more than sufficient to hire additional school resource officers necessary to keep our kids safe in school. There is no reasonable excuse to withhold this service from the citizens of Albemarle County whose money you spend while our children are at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Bucket, and I am a parent of a first grader at Croze Elementary School. I have a master's in teaching, have taught English and Spanish, and I am currently an assistant director at a local preschool. When I learned that the Foreign Language in Elementary Schools program, as a parent, I did not know it was called FLESS, but the FLESS program was going to be cut next year, I, along with so many parents and neighbors, was incredibly disappointed. There are many practical benefits to this program at the elementary level. My son has come home confident and proud to count in Spanish, teach me new Spanish words, and even practice some of his language skills in restaurants. There is evidence that learning a new language in elementary school can improve memory and concentration, which benefits students as they build skills in other subjects such as math and reading. Learning a second language also positively impacts a child's literacy skills in their native language, something that I know has been a priority in our district. Early exposure is key, and waiting until middle and high school is depriving our students of learning a new language during an ideal time for language acquisition. We also know that it is hard to dehumanize and see someone as an other when you speak their language. Respect for other cultures and an understanding of the value of diversity is something we must engender in our children sooner rather than later. Our children need to be prepared to be citizens of the world and see themselves as such, and taking away this opportunity to expand their worldview is unfair. I am aware that Croze is an affluent community and one of only a few elementary schools to have this program in the first place. That, too, is unfair. This is a program that should be prioritized and expanded, not cut. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm the Executive Director of Wild Rock, a local nonprofit in Croze that promotes nature play for health and happiness. Wild Rock is a longtime community partner and supporter of ACPS. We run numerous programs, including after-school programs, camps, outreach visits, and field trips for your students. Last year, over 3,000 ACPS students visited Wild Rock or participated in programs in their schoolyards. I'm here to respond to the proposed cut of over $351,000 to the Guaranteed Field Experiences, or GFEs. I assume folks in the room understand the importance of nature for children's development and physical and mental health, so I'll gloss over that and talk about the curriculum for the GFEs. The GFE curricula are co-created with ACPS teachers and community partners to ensure that the material in their experience is SOL-aligned, relevant, and supports classroom learning. I'm so proud that ACPS has offered these field experiences to all students in the district, ensuring they have the same exposure to cultural activities and environmental science in action. The ACPS strategic plan emphasizes learning for all and engaging students in relevant, authentic learning experiences. This is what the GFEs do. Cutting this funding won't get rid of field trips, it will get rid of equitable access to field trips. There will be fundraising efforts, and the results will not be equitable across the board. Certain children who do not have access to resources will, will not benefit from these field trips. Other kids will see real habitats, find creatures in real creeks, and, and benefit. We want to help. We want all students to have high-quality educational experiences. I noted and applaud the increase in budget for transportation staff and teachers. We love bus drivers and teachers. I have questions about what cutting GFEs means for bus drivers who often take routes in the middle of the day. I also think that teachers who lose their field trip access will struggle. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Wittenborn, Taylor Clements, and Bridget Rogers.
Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lisa Wittenborn. I live in the Jack Jewitt District. I have a student at Western Albemarle High School, and I'm the Executive Director of the Rivasna Conservation Alliance, another community partner that works through the field trip program. We carry out sixth-grade field trips for all students across the county, and I'm here to urge you tonight to continue funding this important program for all of our students. Environmental field trips like RCA's and Wild Rocks and many other organizations in the community reinforce and greatly enrich classroom curriculum, tying abstract science concepts to the real world, supporting different types of learners, and making learning fun and memorable. RCA's watershed science field trips directly tie into our science standards of learning. These field trips lead students in scientific investigations of the conditions of local streams, including streams right behind their schools sometimes, through hands-on biological, chemical, and habitat stream evaluations, and we also provide follow-up activities for teachers to use in the classroom. The Guaranteed Field Trip program ensures that all students across the county can participate in experiential learning opportunities, helping reduce the science achievement gap that we see between disadvantaged and advantaged students. Two years ago, this program allowed RCA to expand our field trip program from just Burley Elementary, or Burley Middle School to all five of the middle schools, and without it, many schools will miss out on these opportunities. Field trips like RCA's play an important role in promoting the well-being of our students and our and our community. Students benefit greatly from seeing how their classroom curriculum connects with the real world, and they also benefit from spending time in nature. We frequently hear that the field trips are the students' favorite part of sixth grade, and I know from running into students out in the community that this sticks with them for a long time. I hope you will continue to provide funding so that all students in Albemarle County can have these opportunities. Thank you so much for your consideration.
First and foremost, I want to thank you all for being here and listening to what I have to say. My name is Taylor Clements, and this is my first year as a student safety coach at Monticello High School, a position that is being reduced to fund SROs. I want to start by explaining the position of a student safety coach. At first glance, it may look like I'm another security officer due to the name and some of the job duties, but I can assure you it is much more than that. The safety coach is a job of many hats. Some days, I'm helping security; other days, I'm providing mental health and behavioral support to students. I've also been entrusted to sit in on disciplinary hearings, threat assessments, working with administrators to do mediations between students, running mental health groups with our mental health counselor, and so much more. I know budget is a big topic of discussion tonight, and I know I'm bold in saying this, but I truly believe this position is one of the most cost-effective expenditures the system can make that directly helps the students. If students are not in class, they don't learn. If they are upset and don't know there are resources, they don't succeed. If they're having an emotional breakdown or an angry moment with no one to guide them, they make bad choices. In my position, I can go up to groups of students in heated arguments, and I can prevent that escalation from happening. But not only that, I can then take the time to sit with them and work with them to ensure it doesn't happen again. I'm successful in this way because my position is that of limited authority. The students feel safe with the student safety coaches. They feel it's a place to vent, seek advice, decompress from their everyday lives without the fear of judgment or consequences. If I can prevent one fight, one person from skipping class, one emotional breakdown, one attempt of harming themselves, or convince one person that tomorrow will be a better day and that someone believes in them, then I think that's money well spent. I can assure you I've done all these things, and then some in my position, and I have student, staff, and even parent testimonies to show you, which will be given to you. I will close with this: We all want the same thing. We want our students to be successful, feel and be safe, and to go out into this community better than they came into our buildings. When considering reducing the student safety coaches, please read these letters, listen to the students, and see how this position has benefited them, and decide will reducing it be negative or positive for their student community. Thank you.
Bridget Rogers from the Ravanna District, and I have two children at Hollymead Elementary School. I'm here tonight to emphasize the urgent need for strategic refinement in the $500 million Needs-Based Capital Improvement Plan, and the importance of working with your Board of Supervisors counterparts to develop a funding strategy to update and modernize all of our school buildings. The average age of our school buildings in this county is over 50 years old, and the demand for modern, updated schools will only continue to increase as the years go on. We need to ensure that CIP requests are specific, actionable, and describe impacts to students, staff, and the community when they are not funded. By refining these requests with specific detail and impact statements, the board and public can more effectively communicate why each project matters. In order for the CIP list to be effective, it must also be funded. ACPS CIP funding began falling short many, many years ago and is now so far behind that we are left with a very large Needs-Based CIP list. I encourage you to work with your Board of Supervisors counterparts to explore funding options to support the $500,000 Needs-Based Budget. Please work with them to consider funding mechanisms such as bond referendums, public-private partnerships, specific tax-based carve-outs for schools like those proposed in the county executive's first budget yesterday, and additional methods to fund critical school facilities. Thank you for your dedication to the future of our students and for considering these critical steps in moving our school infrastructure forward.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Nab, Carolyn Kilde, Chris Dilbeck, and the last one will be Pamela Mierzawa.
My name is Megan Nab, and I live in the Scottsville District. I have one child at Walton Middle School and another at both Monticello and Center One. I'd like to comment today on staffing at Center One as found in the draft funding report. Mr. Perlman is the phenomenal director of Center One. He has assembled an incredible collection of teachers and staff who provide my kid and all the Center One students with a supportive, respectful, engaging...
Ms. Nab, can we make sure it stays on the budget topic and not individuals?
I'll get there. Safe space and community. One of those individuals is Nurse Annie. Page 267 of the budget document proposes having a certified nurse assistant at Center One instead of a nurse. I think this is a grave mistake. My daughter Chloe suffered from a concussion on Monticello school grounds in October. The support she has received from Center One staff, including Mr. Perlman, Ms. Vinkler teachers, and especially Nurse Annie, has been unmatched. Of all the adults who were notified of her condition, and there were many, only Nurse Annie reached out to us with the district's Return to Learn post-concussion recovery protocol. Although Chloe's teachers have been kind and flexible, it helped so much to have a common framework and shared terminology during recovery. Nurse Annie intervened when teachers were pushing Chloe too hard too soon. She let Chloe rest and cry in her office. She let me cry over the phone. She called after hours to check in. She made sure Chloe felt normal in her symptoms and recovery, and even gave us good questions to take back to the pediatrician. She encouraged Chloe to balance her mental health with her physical and academic recovery...
This is still wandering too far from the budget. Can you get back to the budget part of it?
Center One population has a large percentage of twice-exceptional students than the base schools. These students can really benefit from a need an experienced and educated healthcare provider. Nurse Annie is a nurse. She has deep experience in healthcare educational settings, including working with homebound students, and I feel it would be a real loss to Center One if her position was replaced with a CNA.
There you go. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Kilde, and I'm in the Whitehall District. I am here tonight to request that the board reconsider the cutting of funding for the Foreign Languages in Elementary Schools program. The program has been a vital part of the school community where my kids go at Ivy Elementary, and according to other parents at the other schools that have participated in the program. The program allows our students to access a wider cultural lens and learn about things that do not cross their paths in any other way. As the Western feeder schools do not have access to any sort of full immersion program like at Mountain View, this at least ensures that our kids get a bit of the much-needed exposure to other languages and cultures. And additionally, to use Albemarle County Public Schools words in their expanding opportunities, developing a robust world languages program in early childhood, this instruction to become fluent in more than one language can have significant cognitive benefits. These benefits include improved attention, creativity, emotional control, critical thinking, organization, and problem-solving, which Albemarle pulled from all of the current research that was noted by Dr. Sikoli. The... Sorry, lost my place. The idea is that we want to be able to hold this program in our schools because we think that it will improve not only their language learning, but also their academic success across the board, and I urge you to reconsider the cutting of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Dilbeck. I'm in the Ravanna District. I'd like to provide some information here about a personal story that I think supports the existence and expansion of school resource officers within our schools. I graduated Albemarle High School in 2005, and I played football there. One common thing that I learned that year was that not everybody in that school had as good of a home life as I did. I was some people. And one common positive theme in that school and presence in that school was School Resource Officer Reed. He was always there for any of us, no matter what we were going through, and provided advice, high fives, and someone to talk to anytime you wanted it, no matter what you had going on. I remember him because he always stood out near the computer science door. His office was right next to it, and he regularly gave people hellos and goodbyes and was a generally positive presence. One other benefit of having school resource officers in the schools is to counteract some of the negative attention that some people are exposed to online and through the media about police officers. Having exposure to high-quality, ethical, competent police officers early in life is beneficial for all students. And with that, I urge that you all expand the school resource officer programs in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I am here also for the Foreign Language Program and the appeal not to remove it from schools. I am a current public school teacher here for Albemarle County.
Can you state your name?
Pamela Mierzawa.
Okay.
In my training to then become a teacher of fifth-grade elementary school, I am now at Baker Butler, I had my opportunity for student teaching at Broadus Wood Elementary. The first grade class that I was in every day, the joy that I witnessed and the classes that I saw was unsurpassed even now in my daily job. I'm in elementary school every day in a school that does not offer this program. This decision is one that I decided to send my daughter to Broadus Wood instead of coming along with me to the school I teach at because I wanted her to have access to the unsurpassed joy that I witnessed. I would love if someone here, if they're here to support this. You said we would allow raised hands, and I would like to welcome those raised hands right now if you are here for that support. We do not want this program to go away. You have well-trained and professionally-developed your teachers to know the science of reading and the fundamentals of phonemic awareness, and foreign language is the absolute portal and exposure for these children to be able to access this. But really, my pure joy is the appeal I am trying to make for this. The connection that the successes, the furthering and broadening their eyes and their communities is absolutely unsurpassed, and stripping that away from schools rather than adding it would be a grave mistake. Multicultural night is more than one night a year when you have foreign language as part of their daily lives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on the budget.
Thank all of you for coming out and giving public comment. The next item on our agenda is our budget work session number one, led by Maya Kumazawa. Pardon?
I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and this evening I will help facilitate our budget work session number one. Our budget development is focused around our strategic plan, learning for all, and in particular, the budget development process really captures the goal of equitable and transformative resources. So, this evening, we have three topics to cover with you. The first one is revenue updates. These are the revenue updates that were provided by Albemarle County yesterday in the county executive's recommended budget and the impacts that they will have to the funding request. That'll be quick. And then the second piece is the healthcare fund overview. I have my colleagues, Dan Redding and Andy Bowman, here, who will provide a little bit more detail about our healthcare fund. As you know, that this is one of our major cost drivers, as you heard in the presentation last week, and as you will see in the budget book as well. That will be kind of a medium level in terms of numbers of slides. So, if you wanted a break right after that section, might be a good time for that. And then the longest section for this evening is the budget document overview. So, this is more of a working session with your budget books, where we'll actually go through the entire book, and I will point out some of the things you might be interested in. You can ask questions, and it'll be more of an informal, let's learn about what's in the budget. So with that, I will jump into the revenue updates. So, yesterday, the county executive presented his recommended budget for fiscal year '26, and that does impact what we have budgeted in terms of our revenues and the draft funding request. So, the FY '25 adopted budget has a local government transfer of $195 million. That's for the current year. In the draft funding request that you have in your books and in our presentations, that number is $206.5 million. Due to proposed tax rate changes, the recommended budget updates the transfer to us to $209.3 million. So, when you compare what's in the draft funding request in your books to what we are now working with, that is an increase of $2.8 million. So, compared to the FY '25 adopted budget, that's a total of a $14.3 million increase or 7.3 in terms of percentage, and that is a combination of the revenue growth due to assessments, personal property tax rate changes, and natural growth allocated by using our policy guidelines. Now, comparing the new transfer number to what's in the draft funding request, that is driven directly by the tax rate changes. So, real property tax rate is increased by four cents to be 89 cents per $100 of assessed value. The four cents is a dedicated increase, meaning it's not based on our formula split, but it is dedicated to certain programs, .4 of which, .4 cents of the four cents is dedicated to ACPS, and that is driving the part of the $2.8 million increase of $1.2 million. The other portion is the change in the personal property tax rate that's increased by 86 cents to bring the rate back up to the rate it was before the pandemic, and then that revenue is shared by our established formula, which results in $1.6 million in additional revenues. As part of the county's recommended budget, the Recommended Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, was also released yesterday. The total five-year CIP program is $189.6 million. This funds our ongoing programs. The first one is project management. This is the reimbursement that we get to manage our capital programs, so our project managers. It's about $3 million. Our facilities maintenance and replacement program, that's to maintain our existing infrastructure, at $74.7 million. Our maintenance of our network infrastructure throughout the county is $6.2 million, and a school bus replacement of $23.9 million. I'm happy to report that these are fully funded levels of what was requested for these programs, including a fairly significant increase in the school bus replacement program. In terms of our projects, what's included in the five-year plan is an increase for higher costs to build the ACE Academy at Lamb's Lane or High School Center 2, so $600,000 in additional project funds. Mountain View Upper Elementary School, another $600 million due to increased costs for that project. And then you might remember, well, we requested an increase for the Northern Feeder Pattern Elementary School to expand the number of seats from 500 students to 600 students, anticipating the amount of development that's happening in that area, so that increase is also included along with inflationary factors, and that's about $10 million. And then finally, school renovations. This is kind of a larger pot for us to... That doesn't specify exactly which projects it goes, but we can discuss that further. The total five-year budget for that is now $20 million, and that's a $5.7 million increase over the five years from prior CIPs that were adopted. So, as a reminder, the Capital Improvement Program is part of the county's budget process, so you will not find this in the draft funding request, so this doesn't necessarily have any impact or change to the current operating funding request. And then the last piece, which we'll talk more about in the next section, is an update to the healthcare fund. Using local governments' fund... Using local government's fund balance, there's a recommendation to transfer one-time from local government to ACPS, $6.2 million, to use as a one-time reserve infusion into the healthcare fund. And we'll talk more about why that's needed. And the amount is based on our percentage of total membership, so the, we make up about 69% of the employees that are part of our health plan, so that infusion is about 69% of the $9 million needed to maintain our reserve balances. This is in addition to the 24% increase in employer contributions that we're anticipating for next planned year. So the transfer is recommended to be included as a revenue coming into the school fund, but then also budgeted as an expenditure leaving the school fund to then go into the healthcare fund. Talk a little bit more about our various funds later this evening. So there's no net impact. If you do revenues less expenditures, it's a zero impact to the FY '26 draft funding request. Overall, there will be an increase, a fairly significant increase, when you look at our total revenue amount and our total expenditure amount. They'll both go up by $6.2 million, according to this recommendation. Any questions about these three items?
I, of course, have a question about, did you say they've fully funded our school bus request of 30 buses a year for each of the next five years?
I believe 30 was the number, is that right?
I believe so. I just do want to clarify, there was a separate ask for electric school buses, and that remains unfunded, but we are very pleased that the...
Right, right. I just knew that we were requesting an, for five years, an increase in the numbers of replacement buses.
We will get you the exact number.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay.
You said we're going to be discussing more details of the health, the increase, that 24%, is that coming up?
Yep, that's actually next. So I'll move on to the healthcare fund overview, and I will leave this section with Dan Redding. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Maya, and good evening, board members. I have been tasked with a refresher on our healthcare fund and an explanation of how self-insured health insurance works. Some of you have seen this graphic before. Someone said to me after the last time we shared it that this is the most clear explanation of a self-insured health plan they've ever received. If we think about the health plans we, our parents might have had when we were young, the employer collected premiums from the employee's paycheck and paid those to a big insurance company. And every time we went to the doctor or had a claim, the insurance company paid it. And every year, the employer would get a new estimate, adjust their rates, and go forward. Over time, what was found is that as those claims increase, as very expensive conditions occur, insurance companies raise rates, but when those don't happen in large numbers, they never lower the rates, so they continue to add all that money. This concept of self-insured plans came about to actually benefit the employer in those scenarios. In a self-funded plan, employee and employer shares of the premium go into a fund, basically a rather large bucket of money. And that bucket is used to pay every claim from a doctor's office, a hospital, whatever kind of provider. Covers the administrative expenses of the plan. In our case, the costs the Anthem charges us to provide access to their network, adjudicate claims, dispute claims if there's an overcharge from a provider. It covers stop-loss insurance, which benefits us, so if someone has a health condition and their claims cost $800,000, at a certain point, we get reimbursed for claims over, for plan year '25, that amount is $400,000. So when someone crosses that threshold, we're reimbursed for every expense over that. It also covers wellness services, and those are services that hopefully bend to the cost of healthcare. They help employees treat chronic conditions and even prevent conditions from becoming more serious or more expensive. A critical piece of this is to have a reserve, because you don't know when there will be a number of very expensive conditions that you need to cover to take care of your employees and their dependents. So every healthcare fund has to keep an adequate reserve to be sure that when those bills come in, they can be paid. For our health fund, we participate with the county government and several other entities. I'm sorry, I'm causing feedback.
Whatever it was, I hope it stops.
So our health fund participates with our county government.
It's turned off. We need to wait a minute.
All right. It's kidding.
It's kidding? Is this working now? It's working now.
Okay. All right, you can hear me. Perfect. All right. Our healthcare plan participates with the local government, as well as the Albemarle County Service Authority, the Emergency Communications Center, they pick up the phone when we dial 911, the jail, and also the Charlottesville Albemarle Visitors Bureau. Those six entities all participate in discussions around plan design, and a steering committee made up of representatives from the leadership of local government and the school division participate in decision-making about rates, plan design, coverage, and new benefits. That is how decisions are made around our healthcare fund. This is a very collaborative process where everyone stays informed as we go forward. Recently, we've done a number of strategies. We've put a number of things in place to mitigate rising expenses. We continue to look at our competitive market to see how our plan compares to other employers and to see what other employers are doing to manage rising health costs across the country. We're implementing a multi-year wellness plan. Ms. Kumazawa spoke about the infusion into the healthcare balance. That is a really important strategy to keep that reserve well, well in place. We have ongoing dependent eligibility audits to ensure that everyone on our plan is eligible to be on our plan. And finally, our most recent one that I shared with you about two weeks ago is our employee health clinic, which we continue to get amazing feedback on. So that's kind of an overview of how our self-insured plan works. Any questions about that?
I know that we were running dangerously low in terms of our reserves, so the question is, does a $6.9 million transfer get us up with, what, 14%? Isn't that close to the industry standard?
That is the lower threshold. I'm going to let my very knowledgeable friend speak about that in a bit.
Okay. I'll await your speaking, Mr. Bowman.
That's probably a question that we're going to hear about. I mean, I think the question we have, I have at least, is that, is this a trend? And will, you know, do we have any crystal ball to know if this is something that we may have to be doing every year? Was this a set of claims we may not see, or is this a new place in the cost of healthcare?
I can speak to the fact that we've had, we had in 2024, an exceptionally large number of exceptionally high claims. It was quite shocking and significantly different from previous years. However, there has been, trying to remember my 8th grade algebra, the curve has increased. The slope is getting steeper of the increases. Inflation in healthcare is outpacing inflation period.
So, I mean, the two ways to combat that, aside from making our people healthier, are different kinds of stop-loss insurance? I mean, is, can we shop that and increasing the reserves? I mean, maybe there's more, but...
Those are strategies that we have looked at, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bowman from the county's Department of Finance and Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Redding.
Yes, Andy Bowman, Assistant Chief Financial Officer, and thank you, Mr. Redding, for the introduction. As I start, just as I did in December at the joint board meeting, I just need to, again, express my appreciation for the partnership that we have with public schools. Appreciate Dr. Haas, and thank you, who gave us last week and our team in his budget presentation and all of the work we do. I think as soon as the county executive was done with this presentation, the very first meeting I had was with Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Kumazawa to get ready for this meeting tonight. And so whether it is the capital budget or the health fund, our continued partnership, I greatly appreciate it. I also want to recognize in the audience, we have Laura Andrick, who is an employee in Finance and Budget. She is our Chief of Risk Management and Shared Services. And in addition, with our two HRs and our two finance department and fiscal services, working with our benefits consultant, so much of the analysis on this fund and the good work on the strategies, whether it be wellness initiatives, the employee clinic is due to her leadership and contribution. So thank you, Laura, for that. So I'm here to provide a little more detail and hopefully address some of the questions and more that are on the board's minds, because we have in the fiscal year '26 budget, as Ms. Kumazawa has mentioned, a 24% rate that is, would be planned to begin in plan year '26, which plan year and calendar year, I'll use those terms interchangeably. We have, in addition to that, this is two strategies, the $9 million one-time transfer. This was included in the county executive's recommended budget, as Ms. Kumazawa mentioned, that the school share of that, approximately 69%, is about $6.2 million, and the county executive has recommended that be funded from county government one-time fund balance. So I'm going to walk through a few slides. How have we changed in recent years? What has this trend analysis looked like on the expenditures? What does that look like in the trends on the revenue side from the premiums? Third, what is our fund balance and how has that changed over time? And finally, what is the impact of the employee clinic, both in the short term and the long term, as we look through our rates? And I'll share this as information. I'll be sharing with the board supervisors as well at their work sessions on March 10th and 12th. I've also been working with Ms. Andrick to go with our partner entities and update this on a complex story for what is a significant budget driver for everyone this year. So first, and this speaks to some of the, the point Mr. Redding spoke to, the expenditures in the health fund. Just for perspective, in our health fund, which has about a little over 3,000 members of employees, and the total covered lives is over $6,000 when we count dependents. In plan year '24, that was a total of more than $54 million in actual expenditures. And that is really one of the points that Mr. Redding made too, is in our partnership, is we really are stronger together. We're using the, the numbers of the public schools and county government and our partner entities together, that gives us a greater risk pool to ensure us in those challenging years. What we have seen over the last four years, our actual annual expenditure growth in this fund has been 16% each year. And so this has been one that certainly, coming out of the pandemic, we knew there'd be a surge in those expenses as certain procedures or the ability to see the doctor was delayed. But we have seen is that has not been a one-year thing, just as Mr. Redding mentioned, that inflation has been high, medical costs typically outpace inflation, and this is what we are seeing in our experience. The slide on the right, which is very, almost impossible to read on that, so I'll take a moment and explain this, but this really speaks to the high claim data that we are seeing. So first, perspective in plan year '24. We have, we had 16 claimants who had more than $325,000 in claims. What happens above $325,000 is our stop-loss insurance that kicks in, so we're able to be reimbursed above that amount. But that first $325,000 is funded by the health fund. So to have 16 of those in a year is significant, but we looked deeper in the data to show that even between $100,000 and $325,000, there were 53 folks who were impacted at that level. And typically, about $100,000 is what we looked at as a high-cost claim and goes into your experience factor with your insurance and so on. But looking a little deeper, there were another 33 folks between $75,000 and $100,000 who had those claims. So while these 102 people in total are still a small percentage of the more than 6,000 covered members, need a lot and a lot of healthy people to begin to offset the impacts of what you have in those one years. So this is not the only story, because again, we've had four years in a row of 16% average growth. Last two years, I believe, were about 13 and 15, so it's, there's some relative steadiness. But these highest-cost claimants are part of that, and that's actually been one of the strategies we've looked at in our last renewal for stop-loss insurance, where that deductible has increased next year to $400,000 to help buy down some of that premium, looking at our risk factor, because we will rebid that every few years, just like all of our insurance services, to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we can. So that's the summary takeaway on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, really, those revenues come from, in Mr. Redding's slide, the employer and employee contributions. So this is a slide the school board saw back in December that speaks to the history of how these have changed over time. So moving left to right, I'll start with the employee side, where we can see that, you know, from, it's in the footnote, from 2018 to 2022, there was not an increase to the employee premiums during that period. I'm not, I don't have the benchmark data for what that was, but talking to anecdotally, that was pretty unusual as an employer to go for that long of a stretch without an employee rate change. What we have seen, the employee share increased now with that '17, '10, and '18, that has been increasing more, and then with the additional funding of '24, if that's where we end up in plan year '26. But there's been a long time where that employee share has not kept up with that 16% average growth. On the employer side, we see a similar story, though the employer share has been increasing, has not been until the, most recently in the current plan year, and again, until next year, where we're exceeding what has been that 16% average. So we can think about what this looks like in total. Expenditures are growing about 16% a year, revenues are not keeping up. So we have been drawing down that fund balance over time, which is the next slide that I wanted to speak to in terms of, where are we? Because as Mr. Redding spoke to, when you're self-insured, you want to have the healthy fund balance to make sure you can ride out those tough years, so within things even out over time. So this slide puts together the revenue side and the expenditures together, what this looks like in each planned year, if we look at that, that health fund, what were all the actual revenues received, what were all of the actual expenditures that went out the door, and what was the net impact of this fund? This includes if we, there were any one-time transfers in the fund, if there were any employee rate holidays which happened, all of that is reflected. The one thing I adjusted in this chart noted here is that in 2024, it was funded not through rates, but a one-time contribution of $1.7 million split among all the partners for the startup cost of the clinic. That's the, the only item I did not note in '24, because it really would just be money in, money out to that specific project. But to walk ourselves left to right, we can see in 2020, this fund did have a positive experience, but that's not because we were a really healthy organization. That's the impact of the pandemic, not being able to go to the doctor by choice, or medical providers not being able to schedule those. So as it was predicted in 2021, we did have a kind of a bounce-back year where a lot of catch-up procedures, other visits began to happen, and we can see that that was the first year where the actual expenditures greatly exceeded the actual revenues. What we have seen, though, is that has persisted to varying degrees over the last three years. So this is not a, this is not just a one year of a bounce-back from the pandemic, this is not one year of high-cost claimants, this is not one year of just the impact of rate increases. It's been that slow and steady, really, result of all of those things coming together. Now, as Mr. Redding mentioned, the county and the schools have been working together to, in the past, you know, what do we need to do differently with the wellness incentive programs? What do we need to do differently with the strategy of the clinic? And those things have started before now, but it's taken a while to get those to implement, to begin to do some things to help turt the tide in this particular outlook. So to speak to the actual fund balance that is available, the, the policy that the schools and county government managed to is to have a minimum of 17% fund balance in that fund, just as a best practice, that's about two months of expenditures for the year. The maximum amount would be 4%. Now, for those who have been on the board or a while, or have been with the organization a while, may recall that at the end of plan year '19, we have, we had a very different experience. There was a fund balance of just under $17 million, which amazingly was 51% of that plan year '20 budget. That is a fund balance that was well above the policy and the strategy, and with our benefits consultant advising us, to draw that down through premium holidays, rate decisions. So there is a reason some of those rates did change during that time, as they were. What was not anticipated is certainly the change of the 16% expenditures and all those collective impacts that we've been talking about. Something else I want to point out that Ms. Andrick reminds me of is when she started at the county about four or five years ago... at the county about four or five years ago, our health fund expenditures were in the ballpark of about $30 million. 16% growth year over year compounds very quickly, and as we talked earlier, we had 54 million. So we can see that 16 million being about half of the fund balance, that was a $32 million fund. Our healthcare costs have now grown to be a total of 54 million. So starting from that point, at the end of plan year 19, working to the end of plan year '24, we are now down to a $3 million balance or 4.7%. That is a, still, good to have a balance, but that is a very small balance. It would be very challenging should there be an additional year for, to absorb that without having to impact outside of the health fund. So part of that speaks to the strategy of the one-time infusion, along with the 24% rates. And it's not on the slide, but if projections, all else being equal, that infusion happens, we would end up with a fund balance in the 10% to 12% range over the next two years. So I also want to make sure the board understands, these recommendations are not a one-year fix. This is trying to move us in the right direction, so that we're not in a position where we've overcorrected in one year in either direction. So my second to last slide is just to acknowledge the employee clinic. This is both, it's really, I think of it as a two-pronged approach, and I know Mr. Redding has spent time with the board on this before, so I'll be brief. But a lot of this is providing improved access to employees as a benefit. I know that we've seen in county government, I'm sure this exists in the public schools, where we're able to recruit qualified staff from across the country. They come here and they can now get established with a physician, which has all sorts of impacts. That is no longer the barrier that it once was. It's also can be the immediate impact where if, you know, for example, I need to see my primary doctor in a timely manner, and I can't get in, I have an option now available that's not urgent care or the emergency room, which will be a much higher cost to myself and to the county than the employee clinic would be. So just for an update, we're just a few weeks in here. The first two weeks, there were 99 visits to the existing clinic. The first one is open, the second one will open in a few months. 62 of those came from public schools, employees, and dependents. And we also have Saturday hours for flexibility. Every single one of those Saturday slots has been utilized. So it's very early. This shows that there really was demand for the service out there. And as we get further into the clinic, we'll get the data, we'll monitor and see how this plays out over time. So just to clarify, because a question I've received already from some of our partners was, how does this clinic impact our rates in plan year '25 and plan year '26? And the answer is really, there is none, because there is, in the first year, a little bit of a net cost, however we've planned for that in our fund balance, because we know, in the long term, as the clinic is able to, can guarantee will decline our costs, but will slow the rate of growth that we have in those expenses. So that, the 24% and the $9 million is not, is driven by, is not driven by the clinic, but that is one of the things that will put us on the path to a more long-term, steady future in the health fund, as that has continued to be utilized. So to recap, kind of these questions I went back to at the start, you know, we have this very significant cost driver for county government, schools, and our partners of the 24% and the $9 million infusion. The average annual expenditure, so first question, how have those expenditures grown over time? The average annual expenditure growth has been 16% over the last four years. That is, I have the word driven by high-cost claimants, I would say strongly contributed to by high-cost claimants, because even without those, we do have a significant increase in medical inflation. Next, looking at the revenue side, we have raised rates, but they have not kept up with that 16%. The cumulative result of all of that is that our fund balance over time has drawn down to below a 5% level, just $3 million. And then the impact of the clinic, the short-term impact on rates is that there is none, that does not affect the recommendation of 24% for plan year '26. But the long term, knowing that that provides both more effective cost control, but not even the long term, we have the immediate benefit right now to employees who may need a service. They have more access than they did in January. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I may ask Mr. Redding or Ms. Kumazawa, or perhaps Mr. Andrick, depending on where the board's interest is, but wanted to provide that as an overview for the different parts of this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and anything I can't answer tonight will certainly get us a follow-up.
Could you just go back, I think it's two slides, just with the minimum, maximum? So is that two, the policy, does the policy state it's two months of expenditures of the previous year? Like, I'm just curious where that, where that number is taken from?
Yeah, so it would be, it's, yeah, of the plan year budget. So if it was a $100 million health fund, we would want to have a $17 million fund balance as a level. And no more than 33 million in that hypothetical example. Those numbers are much higher than it actually is.
Okay, right. And can you just, just in follow-up, give us, kind of based on the numbers we have now, what those minimum, maximum numbers would be, and where, based on this, if it's approved, where we would, we are anticipating? I know it's kind of ongoing, we would be at the end of plan year '25, just so we could kind of, because then you noted that this is probably a two-year fix, and then, so where we would be? Not right now, but just as a follow-up?
Yeah, I'll restate this part, but I can provide as a follow-up. We would be in, for end of plan year '25 and '26, in that 10% to 12% range of fund balance. But we can provide the exact dollars and how that plays out.
That would be helpful. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any questions down this way? I love the clinic. I was there for the opening, and I do see how it will improve access. But in terms of immediate, or even intermediate cost savings, I mean, part of, part of this will be out of the woodwork phenomenon, where people who might not have sought care at all are now seeking care. And how can we incentivize some of our high-cost claimants to utilize the clinic as opposed to, I mean, if, assuming that that care is appropriate, of course?
Yes, and I mentioned we have some wellness incentives that we're putting in place. The last year was around, just, you know, kind of having sort of an annual wellness check. I don't know if Mr. Redding, would you want to speak to, or Ms. Andrick, the wellness benefit we have now?
Thank you. Yeah, there is an incentive that is part of the clinic opening, and that is for health, sorry, for employees on our health plan to do basically a wellness exam. It's nicknamed the PHA, but they will basically get some labs done on their blood draw. They will answer a survey of health behaviors and health risks, and a general physical exam. And as a result of that, they receive $100, but they also get the benefit of follow-up. So if my blood work shows my cholesterol is in a risky range, the doctor or the nurse practitioner, because our clinic is staffed with a registered dietitian, can refer us to that dietitian who can work with me around changing some of my eating choices to benefit my diet and reduce my cholesterol. Cholesterol medications lead to an, or, sorry, high cholesterol leads to a number of health risks and dangers. Managing that prevents all of those potential complications and costs to our plan. So that's, that's the primary incentive we're using right now.
Thank you. Any other questions about the health plan? Thank you both.
Thank you, Andy.
We are at the point in the agenda where we could take a break, or we can, why don't we take a 10-minute break? Let's come back at 8 o'clock? I'm just gavel happy. I love the tone, but I am.
Let's get back to work. Hello? Hello?
Christine, can you turn the mics on, please?
Okay. Why don't we get started? It doesn't sound like it. Hello?
It feels like it could be.
Hello?
No.
Hello? I don't think it's on.
Could be a sign.
There we go.
Oh, sorry. Yes, please don't.
She didn't mean that.
We are back in session now. Ms. Kumazawa, lead the way.
All right. So, the last portion of our work session will be a walk through the budget document. We're sitting in a very kind of formal space, but this, I want this to be informal. Throughout this section, just jump and interrupt me and ask me questions while we're on the topic. I think that would be the most efficient way to go about it. So, I saw everyone brought their budget books. Nice job. Usually I have to bring a spare and bring one in, so...
Christine had them at our desk.
Okay. Give all credit to Christine. Thank you, Christine. The budget document has seven sections, as you will see. The way that this presentation is organized is by section, so we'll generally go from to back. And then you'll see that the tabs in your binders correspond with the colors. And then you'll also see that we have a page number, usually in the upper right corner, so that you can find exactly where I am in the book. So, the slides are just here to guide us, so you know where we are in the book, but really, the book is the presentation for that. You should also have some sticky tabs and post-its. The paper everything's printed on is easily writable, so just write directly in the book. It's yours to keep. You can mark it with tabs if you want to go back and find it later. And then, also, if I go too fast, just tell me to slow down. So, I'm just going to go through from the beginning and point out some of the items that might be of most interest to you. The first is the message from the superintendent, which is on page A9. So, this is more of a qualitative look at our budget, what this means for the board, you all, what it means for the public, and why the work that's in the book matters. There will be a message that will be written from you to the Board of Supervisors as a next step. So, as we work through the budget, you know, start thinking about what the budget means to you and how you would like to present it to the Board of Supervisors. Every section is lettered, and the page numbers, as you can see, have a letter and then a number. So, A9, as a first step, you can see where the letter is. So, Section A. In Section A, you will find a lot of information about our school division. Some of it is not necessarily financially related, but the purpose of a budget document is to provide a plan for the school division. The financial plan kind of is the underlying piece of the overall plan, but it's important to keep in mind who are, who's being served by the budget. So, there's information about our employees, about our students, and the accomplishments of the division. You'll also find the budget development calendar, and I'll just note that we did postpone last week's work session and combined it to this week. So, this week is called Work Session Number 1, and there will only be two work sessions rather than three. So, getting into the budget, the first place you'll find the highest level of budget information is on page A29. And this overview is talking specifically about our school fund. So, we'll talk about the total budget a little bit later, but because the school fund is our day-to-day operating fund that finances our day-to-day operations, that reaches most of our students and employees, we do tend to focus on that. And this is also the piece that's publicly funded with local and state tax dollars. So, you will typically also see the 25 adopted budget and the proposed budget or the draft funding request for next year. Any changes that you see typically throughout the document will be comparing budget to budget. And that's really the best way to compare as of this point, as we are still in the current year, and we don't know how the year is ending, so it doesn't make sense to compare part of a year to a whole year. So, we want to look at the whole year's budget versus the draft. The other piece to note is that whenever we talk about this year's budget, we're talking about the original adopted budget. That may be different from the current appropriated budget. As you're aware, we make budget amendments throughout the year, and again, that is ongoing. So, the snapshot in time to which we're comparing our budget is the original or the adopted budget for FY25. I'll talk about the revenues a little bit later, and I'll provide an update on how this is different. So, the numbers for the revenues are outdated as of yesterday, but I'll go over that. And then the bottom part of the table shows our expenditures. By the time that we adopt a budget in early May, those revenues and expenditures will need to bounce. Any questions?
Just on the page, A29, not on the screen show, on the page. It also shows the difference. So, I'm going to state the obvious. Here is a gap of 7.8 million with the new, newly updated revenue. That gap is now 5 million.
Can you tell us those new numbers again that we heard?
Yes, I will. When I loop back, oh, on here?
I was going to scratch mine out and change it.
Yes. That's actually a good place to do that. I was going to say, I'll get to it later, but this is the first kind of overview. So, the local, the first line where it says "local," that is mostly the local transfer, but it does include some other earned revenues that we have as a school division. But you could add 2.8 million to the 209.4, and that would be the new amount, which would be, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but just add 2.8 million. Yeah. And then this also doesn't show the transfers I was talking about with the healthcare fund. If we continue with the recommendation, it means that there would be a $6 million revenue in that's currently not shown here, that would increase in the green, and then also 6 million in the orange. So, it'll make our budget look larger than it might be, but we can talk about that.
Okay, my question.
Yeah.
Why isn't the increase shown at the bottom, like the 281 million for the draft? Because it's still...
Oh, the gap?
Yeah, the gap.
Oh, I was just, this is...
Like, the 209 million is more than... That does include what the Board of Supervisors said yesterday, right?
It does not, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, right, all right.
But also, the numbers won't match, and I'll go into revenues a little bit more. We do have other local revenues that are included in this number that's outside of the transfer, so the numbers don't tie up exactly. But we'll be providing revisions, more official revisions.
I guess I should ask about federal funding and the risk of losing said funding. Do we build that into the budget as a potential risk at this point?
Let's, I will also spend some time on that, so I can talk about what we have later on, and then maybe after that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, the other focus point of Section A is that it kind of summarizes what's changing. So, it doesn't necessarily provide a very detailed breakdown of what is in the FY26 proposed request. It really focuses on the change, because I feel like that's more understandable to people. What's the difference? So, on page A32, you'll see a summary of what we're proposing to change by various categories. A lot of this is very technical in nature, and it's, they have explanations on the following pages. So, A32 is a list of everything. The total of $19.5 million, that represents the increase in expenditures. So, the change from FY25 adopted budget to the FY26 funding request is $19.5 million. And then you can see exactly how that change is broken out. Some examples of these main categories, so within baseline adjustment, these are baseline staffing and operating adjustments to maintain exactly where we are. So, what we do is we build a zero-based budget each year. We budget in every single employee. That's our largest cost. And we say, how much does that employee cost? We take current salary assumptions, current healthcare benefit elections, current retirement choices that they make, and we develop a budget from scratch that says, okay, this is what our workforce is costing us. And so, that change from year to year is 2.6 million. There are other changes, but those are, that's the driver. And this number is larger than we would typically anticipate, and that's largely driven by the plan year '25 healthcare rate increase that we saw of 26%. We had not fully budgeted for that in the '25 adopted budget, and so, it's an adjustment to account for the cost increase that we saw last month. That's already in the current year that we're experiencing. So, when we move into non-discretionary changes, those are changes that are anticipated to be, changes between this year and next year. So, the healthcare rate change from plan year '25 to '26, that's a future change as part of the fiscal year '26 adopted budget. So, that cost is included as part of a non-discretionary change. So, that's one piece. Inflation is included as a non-discretionary change as we're maintaining service levels. It's just that the cost of providing that same service has gone up. And then also enrollment growth, which is in a similar category, because in order to maintain our staffing ratios, as the number of kids grow, we must grow our employee group to match the service level in terms of our staffing ratios. The third category is service reductions, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but there's a list of what is included and the $2.7 million as a response to limited revenues. And then finally, learning for all proposals. So, these are the strategic investments, new investments that are proposed as part of the draft funding request, and these are the items that have more detailed descriptions, a logic model, and the impact that that new investment will have. Any questions about these categories and what goes where?
Are we going to be going into detail on any of these, or should I ask questions now?
Any of the what?
Or should I ask questions now? Well, like, for one, what is, why do we have a 24% healthcare increase, like, rate increase?
So, that, I mean, that all ties into the presentation from Andy. It's really about replenishing the reserve that has been drawn down.
And then how do we make sure we're not in the same position again in four years? What is the, and you may not have that answer, I'm not saying it's you, but what got us into this position? I mean, I heard the presentation, but I am not convinced that it wasn't complete, like, that we're not going to be in this position again in a couple of years, where we just deplete the reserve and then...
Yeah. I mean, we do model the many out-years of what the healthcare fund will look like. So, as with any long-term planning, it's our best guess based on historical activity, what it might look like. We do anticipate, in the current long-term projection, we do anticipate these high increases for a couple of years, but then it should taper out. That is what we're predicting as of now. I should have flipped this. So, this is a repeat of Dr. Haas' presentation from last week. We heard healthcare was increasing. We heard a little bit about why. Maybe we can follow up with more details on what, you know, the more the long-term future will look like. But if you look at the last two years, if you take both of those, plan year '25 and plan year '26 increases, we are seeing a 54% increase from the budget from last year to the projected budget for next year. And you can find information on this. A35 has a little bit of information, but this is one area where we would jump around. We do have more information about healthcare and the rates on page C18.
Maya, do you recall how much? I know we even talked about the reserves last year. How much did we put in last year to boost the reserves? You don't have to answer right now.
It was the amount, I believe, above our 2% that we put in. I don't remember the exact number. But yes, we've...
It was what we had above, in terms of our projected fund balance.
Yeah.
It was what we had above 2%.
We'll get you the number. So, the other driver of expenditure increases that I mentioned is enrollment growth. This is also a chart that you've seen, you saw from last week. You can find, again, the cost of the growth is on page A35 at $1.3 million. That includes maintaining our ratios, our current staffing standards, and then it also includes some startup funding to anticipate the opening of the ACE Academy at Lamb's Lane, which is due to growth, to address our student growth. The, these enrollment numbers, so I'll refer a lot back, a lot to our supplemental materials. So, the pink section, the supplemental materials, those are the, kind of, the data that's driving a lot of the decisions. So, that's where you'll find kind of the numbers and the formulas. And so, the first item in that section is the enrollment projection for next year, and that's the primary driver of how resources are allocated, and that's on page G2. You'll, on that page, you'll find the projection by school and by grade level. And that's 13,802 is our projection for next year. So, I'll just spend a moment to talk about the service reductions. There's $2.7 million proposed in reductions as a result of our limited revenues. These are in addition to all the cuts that you all approved for the current budget. So, central office and department-based positions are reduced by $476,000. The elimination of the foreign language in elementary schools program is eliminated at $690,000. The elimination of the National Defense Cadet Corps program. The restructuring of the freshman seminar to freshman advisory, and the reduced budget for guaranteed field experiences. I wanted to clarify that item, since there was some public comment on it, and clarify that the current program that we have for guaranteed field experience remains the same. So, we are maintaining what we have. So, all the field experiences that are planned for our elementary school students to go to these fun places are still accounted and budgeted for in the draft funding request. What's being reduced is we had budgeted to expand that field experiences out to higher grades, to high schools. And so, this reduction doesn't allow for the expansion, the expanded program at higher grade level. So, that's what the reduction represents. There are opportunities for our middle and high school students to have field experiences that are budgeted from other places that aren't part of this budget line item. So, this line item is reducing the expansion of the current program that we have, but maintaining what we have right now. The next item is fewer student safety coach positions. This represents three positions in the high schools. And then the last item is to reduce our furniture replacement program in half by $600,000. So, that adds up to the 2.7 million.
I have a couple of questions on this. First of all, on the FLESS program, I would like some more information on, that's considered a special, and so, are teachers going to still get their planning time? And how will that work? Making sure that that is covered. I'm also, I thought tonight's public comment was, and emails have been worth considering, I guess I will say. And then on the student safety coach positions, didn't, if I'm not mistaken, Ralph Bradley say that that's actually a zero? So, it's not actually negative 250, because right here it says negative 250, but then we're filling it with SROs and it zeros out?
Right. It zeros out when you combine this reduction, which is related to the SRO addition. So, together, those are zeros.
That just is kind of misleading, because it makes it seem like we're making cuts when we're not, really. So, it would be helpful to say, yes, we're cutting these positions, but if we're talking about what the net is, it's not cutting any of that $7, $5 million. it's not cutting any of that $7.5 million deficit.
I think it would also be helpful to know what schools are affected by the elimination of the FLESS program.
And I'd like to add what other programs were considered in place of it. And I think it's important to look at with that, what the correlation is between stronger test scores in all of those schools and having a foreign language program. Because I think that there could be a strong correlation. And as we're trying to get scores up in our other schools, it may be worth looking at as well.
Yes, was that program started before we were big on logic models and looking at outcomes and things like that? Or do we have that data on the?
The program was started before we, it had no goals when it was established. It was just-
Hasn't been tracked since then?
No, it hasn't. And in fact, it was at many elementary schools. And last year, when we had the budget crunch, we offered schools the opportunity to do a waiver for their FLESS program and use it for other staffing. And all the other schools have abandoned the FLESS program. These schools retained it because they wanted to have grade-level positions, reading intervention positions, other positions that would help contribute to the core program in a more direct way. So we haven't tracked really anything with the FLESS program because it's what we call a legacy program. It was started before we even really used the strategic plan. I wasn't on the cabinet. Nobody on this board was around at that time. We just weren't doing business that way.
And I will also add, the intent of the next work session is to talk both about the reductions and the learning for all proposals. And we'll have staff here to, so we'll do our best to answer, clarifying questions.
Okay. Well, I would still like to ask them so that we have the answers for next week. Yeah, thank you. And I think it would be important to note how many students are being affected by cutting these programs. Because when you do look at the budget, the spending per student at all of these schools does fall in the very bottom of our schools.
I'll also note that I did ask earlier this week how much it would cost to expand the program to all of our elementary schools. I believe it was 1.8 million on top of the 690,000. So it would be 2.5 million for it to be equitably spread.
Thank you.
So as Ms. Schmidt mentioned, we will go into these items in more detail in terms of the content.
Because I don't think anybody here doubts the value in learning a foreign language at a young age.
No, I'm not arguing that. But it seems like even more of an unfair cut now, knowing that these schools chose to keep in and now they're being affected. So I just think it's worth looking into.
So at the end of Section A are the proposals. So we have five proposals in this funding request. And these go into a lot more depth into what that entails. So this is new investments. They include a description, the owners, how that change will be managed, as well as the logic models. That includes inputs, activities, outputs, and outcomes. So what will we accomplish by this new funding? So I encourage you all to read those in detail and ask questions. This is also not just an opportunity to maybe change the budget, but also change how we're measuring things. So we're, we welcome feedback in these areas.
And we will have staff at the next work session for each of those proposals. So any advanced questions would be helpful so that we can prepare and address them collectively. We'll do that tonight, but just-
How would you just like us to send those to their?
So we are capturing everything through budget@k12alderal.org.
Okay. So we should just send those there.
What's that?
For first school board, you want us to just send all those questions in advance there? By when would you like all those questions?
The earlier you get them to us, the earlier we'll respond, I guess. Yeah, it's an ongoing process. And then just to respond to Ms. Spillman, the SRO proposal is also in here. And that has a cost attached to it at $252,000. So that's how we are showing kind of, yes, there's a reduction, but then there's a cost to that SRO proposal. So if there's a better way to show it, I'll, but that, yeah. I'm open to hearing how we can show it better. But the justification is that we show the increase and we show the decrease. And we try to do our best to explain that they're connected.
Yeah. I do have, and I will submit questions. But specifically with the FLESS program and with ISC, I do want to express my frustration in that emails have gone out either to the entire school district or to, for ISC and to the specific elementary schools about these programs being cut or added. And our budget has not been finalized. And so that really bothers me from a standpoint of an email going out to everyone telling them that ISC is being expanded and we're doing this. But it hasn't been approved by the school board. This is by no means a rubber stamp. We're, up until tonight, we were $7 million over budget. So to get an email that says that we are moving forward with these things when we have yet to discuss it seems awfully misleading. And when schools are getting, principals are sending out emails with people from central office saying that we're cutting our language programs next year before that's been decided by the school board, seems a little preemptive. And I would prefer us to be able to work through these things and approve a budget before emails go out saying that we are doing something in our school district that hasn't been approved. And specifically with ISC, my son attends ISC. So that's, it made it seem like it was a new program, and it's not. But I have not been able to find what the budget has been for the last two years for ISC and what the difference is going to be for this expansion with taking on prep. So I would really like to know how much more money we're spending by taking on prep in ISC. How long it's going to take us to make up to, versus sending those kids out to other schools? And what the current cost per student is? And then what the expected cost per student's going to be with the anticipated enrollment, if that goes through?
I can answer part of your question now. On page A46, there is a detailed breakdown of exactly-
Did you say 46?
A46, yes, 46. Of the net, so what we show is the net for this proposal, the increase of $648,000. So that's the new cost of the change. And the way that's broken out is there are a lot of pieces changing within that. And so the bullet points in the middle of that page explain what's changing. We're adding 15.5 FTE. And that would cost $15 million. But there are areas we're saving because of the restructure. So you kind of walk down line by line. The biggest item on there to note is the elimination of the tuition payment that we currently pay to prep. That goes away. And that's really the bulk of what's funding our new program. So, but, and then for per pupil funding, we don't have that calculation, but we can get that.
I think that that's something that would be helpful in a lot of these programs that we're talking about cutting or adding. What is it going to cost per student? Not just the overall cost. Because as we're looking at enrollment issues with the centers and the studios, what does that look like if we do get to our enrollment numbers? Or if we're not meeting them, how much more we're spending per student on each of these programs? Thank you.
Good questions.
Okay, with the guaranteed field experiences, are those trips related to the curriculum? Like in history or in its setting?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be for all of the schools?
For all elementary school students, yes. So I'm going to move next to revenues. We'll spend a little bit of time on that. So that's on the next tab. This slide is a repeat from last week. This is our total budget. It's a little bit different from the school fund. And you won't find this in the book because there's a reason why we separate the school fund and special revenue funds. If you were to add up our school fund and our special revenue funds, make adjustments for transfers between the funds so we're not double counting money, the total budget is $304 million. Of that, you can see it's still a majority locally funded, 71%, 25% state, and 4% federal. So this is kind of the big picture of how are we funded? What is the impact of federal funding? And I will talk more about the special revenue funds and this federal funding when we get to the special revenue fund section. Section B focuses specifically on the school fund only as that is our largest fund and it's our day-to-day operating fund. So if you home in on that, you can see the split. You can see the federal slice becomes much smaller because there's only one very specific revenue stream that we budget into the school fund. The local revenues is mostly made up of the local government transfer. So that's what that amount represents. So let's talk about that a little bit more. Actually, first, if you flip the page, you'll see a division level per pupil summary. So all this does is it takes our enrollment every year and then it looks at our budget, actuals for a couple of years, then adopted and draft. And it just divides the budget by the number of students we have. You can see that our cost per pupil has grown every year. Including the proposed funding requests, we're now at $20,000 per pupil, which is a 3% increase over the '25 adopted budget. All right. So going back to the local revenues. The local government transfer is established per formula, as I've mentioned, where there's a pool of shared tax revenues. And after certain adjustments are made, we receive 54% of the increase from year to year. 36% goes to county general operations and 10% goes to CIP and debt service. So again, just to repeat from earlier, what you see in the budget book is no longer up to date. We are anticipating $2.8 million above what is in the book in terms of our local revenues. We don't talk much about the county's budget document, but it has a lot of great information in it. My favorite page is this one. It's on page 232. But this is where you can see exactly how they calculate our share of those revenues. And it's a significant amount. This is essentially funding our budget. So I think it's important to understand. And on this page, it's too small for you to read here, but if you're able to go to it later, you can see how the new tax rates are impacting us, how, and how it's dedicated to other areas. You can see what part is split in the 10, 54, 36% split. And then you'll be able to track the total transfer amount, the $209.3 million. That then ties to our revenue amount for that transfer of $209.3 million. Are there any questions about the formula or the split?
Would you just mind giving us a copy of that when you do updates next week?
Yes.
Would it be possible to get the fund balances as well, not just what's being spent from them?
The fund balances for?
On the, like for the trans, well, I guess from the, can you go back? Sorry. Back again. The-
Like our total fund, our fund balance?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that.
Yeah, just so we can, like, because we're talking about what we're spending from our funds. But I would love to just see what the total balance is.
Where we are?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I got myself lost.
All right. So our next largest source of revenue is the state revenue. This begins on page B11. State revenue is largely driven by enrollment or average daily membership. And as your ADM goes up, as you can see in the formula, that's kind of boxed in, your total revenue will go up as well. And so our ADM for next year is projected to be 13,602. This is a little bit different from the September 30th projection you see because there are some adjustment made, adjustments made in that formula. The other piece for state funding, as you are aware, is the local composite index. So again, if you're interested, page G30 shows you the exact calculation for how the state comes up with our LCI of .6904. On page B10, you'll see, well, what has the trend been? And you can see that every two years is the same because it's based on a biennial benchmark. And so we're in the second year of this LCI, which is the highest we've had. And so that's the contributing factor to our depressed state revenues. As a reminder, this is our projection for if our LCI had not changed, we would be about, receiving about $10 million per year. So you can see how the dark blue lines is what we're actually projecting. And these numbers are based on the Senate and House amended 2024 to 2026 crossover budget. So this is not a finalized budget. This is just the most recent budget that we have available to us. And that's what's used in the funding request.
Do we have any sense as to, say, two years from now, what we'll be looking at with LCI? And as LCI seems to be a problem, is there any hope of that ever changing at the state level? Perhaps our, with our representatives? I know they were lobbying for it.
Yeah. Yeah, that, well, we're all aware of the J-LAW report and the recommendations that came out of that. It seemed from the, let's see, we had our winter VAS meeting where Secretary Gudera was in that meeting. Just Rosalind's nodding because she was on that. It was a Zoom meeting, so we were, because of the weather. So my read on the way they were answering questions at that meeting, it really sounded like they were dragging their feet, that the governor was proposing, I think, $1 million to a task force to continue to study it. But they weren't going to do anything during, at least my take is they're not going to do anything while he's still the governor. I was, just anecdotally, for whatever it's worth, I left that meeting thinking they weren't going to do anything with the support cap. But then it came up through the legislature and it's now part of the crossover budget is to address the support cap. That's why we actually got a little bump in our state funding before I did the presentation. So that was, I was pleased about that because some superintendents were asking, even though you're not going to do, change things with the J-LAW report, would you do something with the support cap? And she also answered negatively to that. Now regarding, so I do think with, you know, potential changing of the guard, you know, as things move forward with a different administration, I think there is momentum and there's a lot of conversation and work going on, particularly on, in talking to Senator Deeds about it, that there's a lot of momentum in the Education Committee to address the local composite index. So I do think we will see change, I would say, before the end of this decade, I think. We cannot accurately predict what the LCI will be. The best, I would say the best way to predict it is like, so right now it's 2025 and we know our property values are increasing. That is one factor in, of the three factors of our local wealth. So if it's increasing, then it could be that two years from now, our LCI will also increase. It sounds simple to do that, and it is because other places, depending on what other places do, like let's say another, several school systems decrease in value, well, ours could go up even higher than it was going to go up. It could be other places all go up a lot more. And even though we increased, we dropped because it's one pie. And so every time they do it, there's winners and losers. So if it was just a budget that they built annually and said, how much money do we need for schools? And then they built the budget around it, we could do it. But what they do is they bring in all the revenue, make a pie out of it. And then they say, oh, you win, your rate went up less, your local property value went up less, your adjusted gross income. The other big indicator for us that has been impactful is adjusted gross income locally. That, one of, there was a recent news story that I sent out to the cabinet, and I think it's, it was a couple of months ago now. But the wealthy people- it's, it was a couple of months ago now, but the wealthy people are moving here at increased rate from Northern Virginia because during the pandemic, they found that they weren't going to the office now. That could have been disastrous now, who knows? But they are, they're working from here. And they're working in other places where it's, even though we're really expensive, we're a lot less expensive than Northern Virginia. So they're working from here, they're coming from other places, and they're bringing that adjusted gross income with them, but we don't have access to it. So I know that was a long answer, but to say that it's very hard to predict what it will be, except my prediction is that locally, our LCI will just keep going up because of that adjusted gross income and because our property values go up. We are 14th in the state now in terms of the rate of our LCI. If you take all of the eight school systems above us that are all truncated at .8, which is where the state caps is, where I think we're fourth or fifth in the state. The city is even higher than we are. They're a .77. I was really surprised the other day when I looked in there and saw just how high they are. So this area is becoming, is going to be one of those districts at some point where it's, I think, will be capped at .8. Now, there's advantages to that because then, once you get above .8, you could be, someday it could be a .9, whatever, it won't matter. You're going to get the same amount of funding from the state. So you actually don't fluctuate that much from year to year, other than an increased rate that the state would do based on the governor's budget.
It just seems like a lot of work and a lot of good things was revealed in that J-LARK report. And I'm not, just wondering, like, what do we do with the information that we got from that report? Or does it just continue to sit there?
Yeah, I think they're going to nibble around the edges of it until we have a change of, real change of philosophy at the governor level, I think.
Yeah, I raised this this week with Creed Deeds as well, at the groundbreaking for the school. And they're studying it. But, you know, he said the real barrier is going to be where are they going to find the money to make the changes that they need to do across the board, not just in the LCI, but in all of those recommendations. They've recognized the need for the past 30 years to change it. And we've gone through different flavors of governors and nobody's changed it.
Yeah, to your point, and I won't prolong it, but that, I just, I do think the biggest issue is Virginia's philosophy around funding education.
Right.
That we are, we live in a low-tax, low-service state. Education's a service, and they fund it at a very low rate. And it's well-recognized that if the recommendations from the J-LARK report were implemented, I mean, the funding would be on a magnitude of that.
Yeah, the J-LARK study provided that if Virginia, which is in the bottom quartile in per pupil investment, was just raised to the national median, that it would be $1,900 more per student and about $26 million for us as a school division. And we could probably find use for 25 extra million dollars a year. I think, I think we could.
Alright. Now that you're a bit oriented with the book and flipping through, and given the time, I'm going to move more quickly. So if you have questions, speak out. So federal revenues, as I mentioned, the school fund only receives a small portion of total federal revenues in the school fund. That's what you see on B20. In this case, it's a Medicaid reimbursement. So we provide services and we get reimbursed from federal funds. That amount is being adjusted to reflect historical receipts. It's not being adjusted for any other reason. Transfers from special revenue funds. So we do budget in transfers from our own special revenue funds to help support our school fund budget. For example, we budget a transfer from child nutrition to cover kind of overhead or administrative services that we provide for that fund. As we are one division, we have one fund for child nutrition, but for them to pay for kind of that overhead, that's the charge. You'll also see some other smaller transfers as part of that revenue. So the next section is school fund expenditures. So this is a fairly short section. It kind of gives a summary overview of expenditures as our budget is large and complex. This, this section aims to kind of provide that summary view of what's in the budget. Not necessarily the change, like in section A, but what is in the FY26 funding request. We do have a fairly robust budget code structure, so you might, you might hear me refer to some of these items. These are more technical in nature, so I'll try to stay away from that. But at a very high level, as I mentioned, we have a total school budget. That was the $304 million in expenditures. Of that, we have a school fund and special revenue funds. Within the school fund, because it's so large, we break it down into two more categories, our schools and our departments. And so the schools have a dedicated section in the book, which is section D. Our departments have a dedicated section, section E. And then our special revenue funds make up section F. This donut chart shows kind of the size of those budgets. Our school-based budgets make up 67%. Our department-based budget make up 23.5%, and our special revenue funds make up about 9% of that total budget. This is an org chart of how expenditures are managed, largely by department. So you can see, you have the school board at the top and the direct reports of the school board. And then all the green boxes are actual budgets that are managed within those areas. So the numbers you see there are department codes that we use to track expenditures. And you can see how, within the organizational structure, the oversight areas for each of those budgets. So this is on page C4. Also, this actual visual is on A16. Going back into school fund expenditures, throughout sections D, E, and F, you will see the proposed expenditures broken down in two different ways. So the first way you'll see every budget is by expense type. So this is what is that budget going towards? Is it going towards salaries, benefits, other wages, operations, or transfers? So that's what is it paying for? And then the other way is by state reporting category, also known as functional area or program area. And so this is the same expenditure budget, but broken down by function. And so you can see that instruction makes up 71% of what the expenses pay for, and then you can see some of the other categories by which we report. Both of the charts make up $288.9 million in expenditures. Section D. So now, within the school fund, as I mentioned, that's broken down by schools and departments. We'll start first with the schools, which is our largest area. So the way we develop school budgets, it's also a kind of a zero-based budgeting approach, is that we first start with the enrollment projection. So every fall, I usually stand here and I provide an update on what our enrollment projection is. That's really the first step in the budget process because that drives the resource allocation. So as I mentioned, you can find those on page G2. What you can also find in that supplemental area is the staffing standards. So we take the enrollment projection, in the most simplest sense, we apply the established formula of how we allocate resources. So for example, K3 classroom teacher for every 20.05 students. What results? What the actual FTE allocation is, or what the actual FTE we budget for that school is also in section G. It's called school-based staffing allocation. So you can see in this little screenshot, we have every school listed, and then we have all their statistics that we use that are the inputs, and then their base classroom teachers. So Agner is allocated 21.89 base classroom teachers, and then they're allocated an additional 3.4 for reducing class size. So the base classroom staffing standard is a ratio of the number of students. And then we have other staffing standard areas, for example, reducing class size. Depending on the demographics of the school, there's a different formula for additional staffing. You'll see there's many, many columns of different staffing areas, and if you're interested or curious about that, my encourage you to look at it, ask questions. And if, again, if it's confusing and there's room for showing it better, please let me know. So staffing allocations make up 94% of a school's budget. So that's an average. If you added up all the school budgets together, took their, divided up what the budget was, 94% of it would go towards staffing or FTE. So this, page G20 is what's being budgeted. Some smaller pieces that schools get on top of that FTE allocation is an operating budget allocation. That's on page G25. So this is just for having, buying, renting copiers, buying paper, buying office supplies, and kind of those classroom materials that are needed in every school. That's what the operating budget allocation is. And then there's also a supplemental pay allocation. So this is for additional pay beyond FTE costs. So we talk about other wages a lot in that pie chart. This is where, what other wages is. It's paying for overtime, paying for temporary work, and paying for substitute teachers. That's the main driver under supplemental pay. So when you take all of that, that's really what's, what's being shown in section D. So when you just look at section D, it's hard to kind of interpret or decipher the numbers, but now you know how we come up with those numbers. As I mentioned in a previous slide, we show a school budget in two different ways. The first one is by expense type, so, and then you can see it overtime as well. So the expense type is salary, other wages, benefits, and operations. And then the state category report is instruction, administration, attendance, and health, technology, building services, and transportation.
Could you explain the $5 million, $5.7 million, I guess, transfer or move to non-departmental from fiscal services? Where did that come from? And if you can't answer it now, if that's later, that's fine. I just, it stuck out to me.
I'll address that. I'll stop there in the next section when we do department. You said a non-departmental?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Yep.
I thought you asked if there were any questions on the whole section. Sorry.
Nope, nope. And if I forget, just shout at me. So those are the school budgets. This is a summary, so if you were to go to page D11, it gives you a list of all the, a list of the school budgets. Actually, it's D12, so just flip the page one more. This is just a visual representation of what's shown on page D12. And as you might expect, our larger schools have larger budgets and our smaller schools have smaller budgets. And you can see how enrollment really drives the size of a budget. Alright, so section E. So again, as a reminder, the school fund has school budgets and department budgets. So we covered schools, now we'll cover departments. As I mentioned, we manage our budgets by these different areas. We have executive services, instruction, human resources, community engagement, communications, strategic planning, operations, and technology. And as I mentioned before, these budgets are tracked by these department codes. This is a summary of department budgets. With this, you can't really find a pattern in it the way you can with schools because the way we allocate budgets for departments is very different from schools, as there are no student-to-teacher staffing ratios. What we do do is we develop a budget for every department, and we say that you cannot go over, so it is a zero-based budget in that you start at zero and then you're building up your budget. However, there's a ceiling, and departments cannot go over what they were previously budgeted, and any changes have to be justified. Those justifications are in section A. So all those technical items that you saw, that is largely driven by department budgets and the changes that they're seeing from year to year. And they're very specific to departments. You can't really treat all the departments in the same way. So, and for example, as I mentioned, the FTE cost for schools was about 94%. If you added up all the department budgets, salary makes up 35% and benefits is 19%. So FTE costs are a little bit over half, but not nearly at the same level as schools. So what's really driving department budgets are operations and transfers. So you might ask, well, what are those? The operational cost drivers are listed in here. These are categorized by the 10 most common expenditures across all of our departments. So you can see the largest cost driver is school facilities, so utilities for our school facilities, so electrical, heating, water, sewer, and refuse costs, a transfer to the Children's Services Act, contract services, the transfer to technology equipment replacement, repairs and maintenance, voluntary early retirement incentive program. And a lot of these programs aren't, cover the entire division, even those FTEs in the school fund. So this, for example, VRIP, this is a cost that we bear in the department budget, but it's VRIP mostly for our instructional, school-based FTEs. Furniture and fixtures, our payment to K-Tech for tuition for our students, software licenses, and fuel. So those are our largest drivers. So going back to the question about transfers, if you, transfers does make up 11.2% of our department budget, which is pretty significant. I will point you to page C12. On C12, you'll see exactly what that 11.2% is. We have transfers mostly living in non-departmental, and it's because you can't really assign a transfer to a department because it's just a movement of money. It's not really a spending of the money. So we transfer, you can see, the largest cost in there is to the equipment replacement program at $2.6 million. We have a $600,000 transfer to learning resources for textbook replacement, and we have $260,000 for vehicle replacement, and then $763,000 for Bright Stars. So that's another significant cost. That's our local portion of the state grant that funds about half of that program. So it's accounted for in the school fund through a transfer, but the revenue and expenditure is also accounted for as a special revenue fund. So that's where it gets a little bit complex and the interplay between our funds. Does that answer your question, Ms. Philman? The transfers?
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, so similarly to schools, we do show department budgets in the same format. So on every department page, you'll see the budget by expense type, so salary versus operations, and then by state category report. Alright. So our next section is the green tab, special revenue funds. And here, you will see a similar format of how we break down our revenues and expenditures. So we do show here our revenues into our special revenue funds by local, state, and federal. And you can see how federal makes up a large portion of our special revenue funds. The funding request projects revenues of $28 million, which is an 8.1% increase over the 25 adopted budget. The pie chart is an expenditure summary of how we are spending those funds. 45% for instruction, 35% for food services and non-instruction, and then some smaller slices for the other areas.
Did this change yesterday also with the board's?
No, this remains the same. So this is a review of the slide from last week about our federal special revenue funds. We have budgeted about $11.5 million in federal revenues within our special revenue funds. Of that 11.5, about 90% funds just three programs, and they're listed here. That's school lunch, which provides free and reduced meals, IDEA, which is a special education program, and Title I that provides support for direct interventions. So if there were any federal reductions in these areas, this would impact our students directly, and we would require local funding to make up any shortfalls. I know there was a question on that, so I'll pause. So those were the three major federal programs. We do have some smaller ones here, so you can see the largest ones here, and you can see the size of those. So IDEA, Title I, Title II, which is a little bit smaller, Carl Perkins, which is a CTE grant, Title III, and then a combination of all the other federal programs are .4 million.
You said a total of 24 million?
Uh, for federal?
Yeah.
So the, we have, it's a bit confusing, but we... So the, we have, it's, it's a bit confusing, but we categorize our, because we have so many special revenue funds, we categorize them by federal programs, state programs, local programs, and capital replacement. Each of those funds may have different revenue sources. So one way to break it out is by program. So these are our federal programs. However, when you take all of our special revenue funds and you look at what are the federal revenue sources, it's 11.5 million. And you won't be able to pull that out of the budget book, because it's a combination of child nutrition, which is a self-sustaining fund in terms of how we talk about it, but they do receive a lot of federal funding, which is why we're kind of showing it in this way, and we don't typically do that.
So the potential that, of local funding that may be required if we were to lose any, like, lose all our federal funding, let's say, would be 11 and 1/2 million?
If, if you chose to fund that.
Okay.
So it's, we're not required to provide free lunch, but if you said we want to provide free lunch, we would have to find the revenue for that.
Right. So 11 and 1/2 million out of 200 and, like, what is the-
Three, 304 million.
Three, okay.
It's about 4%.
Yeah, about 4%.
4%. Okay. That's what I wanted to get. Thank you.
Yep. So as I mentioned, we, the budget book is categorized by program type, not necessarily by specific revenue source. So the next program type is state program. So these are programs supported by the state. That includes Bright Stars. You can see that's the largest portion. As I mentioned, this, we don't get $1.9 million from the state. That's just the total budget for Bright Stars. We just categorize it as a state program. And as I mentioned, there's a local transfer that we contribute to Bright Stars. Combining the local transfer from us and the state revenue, that budget is 1.9 million. The other categories are Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center, Technology Estate Fund for Technology Replacement, Learning Recovery, also known as Summer School, and then the combination of all the smaller grants are about $200,000. So I just wanted to touch on some of our largest self-sustaining programs. One is child nutrition. As I mentioned, we categorize this as a self-sustaining program, but you can see there's federal revenue, there's local school revenue, there's some state revenue, and there's some use of fund balance. So there's various sources of revenue make up this specific special revenue fund. So you can see that same $4.4 million that you saw on the previous slide is one piece of the child nutrition fund. What's also in the budget book is a proposal for the prices, so what is, what is driving these revenues? And so in this, in this budget, there's a proposal to increase student breakfast and lunch price, prices in order to cover the expenditures that are projected in this fund. Another major program that's a special revenue fund is the Extended Day Enrichment Programs, or EDEP. This one, as you can see, is, is completely self-sustaining through earned revenues, through fees and tuitions. That's why you see that one line across the top. There's also a proposed price increase for this program that's included as part of these projected revenues. And then finally, we have some other special revenue funds that I wanted to point out, but I also wanted to show how there are various funding sources throughout the budget document and throughout the CIP that really contribute to the service we provide. So for example, transportation services. While you won't find this number anywhere documented, it's, we provide $24.7 million in transportation services. Of that, $18.5 million is in that department-based budget in section E. We also have a vehicle replacement program that's about $260,000. That's a special revenue fund on, in section F. We have a vehicle services fund that's about $1.4 million, also in section F. And then, as I mentioned earlier, our school bus replacement program lives in the county's capital improvement program, and that's funded at $4.3 million for next year. So you can see, while you may only see the transportation department in section E as a traditional department, there are various funding sources and different budgets that are managed by that department.
And to answer the earlier question, that school bus replacement program is about 30 buses per year, so your memory was accurate. It's approximate, because depending on the year, they buy more specialized units, the up or down, but your 30 was accurate.
The other department I wanted to point out is technology services. They're also funded by various sources. There are school-based FTE that are included in the school-based budgets of about $3.1 million, so that's in section D. And you can see the breakouts within kind of the school-based staffing allocations. You'll see technology support staff within those allocations. And then what you would traditionally imagine a department-based budget for technology to look like is in section E. So similar to transportation, the bulk of it does live in the department budget. As I mentioned, technology has an equipment replacement program that's one of our special revenue funds at $2.6 million, and then a state-funded technology equipment replacement program at .7 million. And then technology also has a piece in the CIP, which is the maintenance of our network infrastructure, and that's about .3 million. I put page numbers for the county's budget, so if you were to look at it, you can find exactly the funding and the five-year plan for each of these programs. So the last piece on special revenue funds is contingency funding. We do have two contingency funds in our special revenue funds. The first one is called the Revenue Contingency Reserve. This fund was established as a general reserve for revenue shortfalls. So you might remember, in order to get to a balanced budget for FY '25, we proposed using $1 million as kind of a Band-Aid or a bridge to get to a balanced budget. So this would be a one-time transfer from this reserve, and after that one-time transfer this year, we project the ending balance of that fund to be $2 million. So this might be a source of revenue, a one-time source of revenue for other shortfalls. The other, the names are a bit confusing, but the other reserve is called the Federal Revenue Contingency. And this one was established specifically for federal revenue shortfalls. We do have, even though this is a one-time reserve, we do have a recurring use of it, so it will run out. We typically fund about two FTEs out of this fund that provide Title I and intervention services. So as our costs of FTEs are going up, our Title I funding remains relatively flat. So in order to maintain the services of our Title I programming, we are supplementing it with a transfer from this fund. So that's, you can see, is being quickly drawn down.
Quick question, do, for these, do we have any, either, either in policy or in practice, any minimum-maximums that need to be sitting in those funds? They're just kind of a-
All right. So the last section's only one slide. It's the table of contents. This is just a list of the, some resources you have to look at numbers and how budgets are being driven. The enrollment projections are there, the average daily membership, which is another way to look at enrollment, staffing standards, so the formulas we use to allocate resources, a staffing summary, what are the, a summary of the numbers of FTEs throughout the division, school-based staffing allocations is a more detailed look at every type of position and how many positions a school gets, classification review cycle. If you might, you might remember, there was 6% of a school's budget is reserved for operating budgets and supplemental pay, so those exact allocations are listed there. You might be interested in the school-based per pupil expenditures. And then finally, as I mentioned, the LCI calculation is listed there as well. So, next steps. We had a lot of really good questions about kind of the changes in the budget. We plan to get, provide more details on the service reductions and the proposals, as well as potential balancing scenarios, if that is your wish, for next week. So it's a lot, so we welcome feedback on specifics on what you'd like to hear. And then it's a short turnaround, but on March 13th, you're scheduled to approve a funding request. That funding request can be needs-based, it's up, it's at your discretion how you'd like to present that, so we'll work on that over the next two weeks.
Is there a reason that we're not doing another public hearing next week for the work session?
We, we typically have one public hearing throughout the budget process. That's something that-
Well, and I will also add at the March 13th regular business meeting, there's public comment.
But we're approving the budget on that night, correct?
You're approving your funding request.
Okay.
And then we will have further conversations in April-
I got you. Okay.
Before it's approved, too, which there'll also be public comment.
We have until May 9th to approve the budget. So there's plenty of opportunities.
Thank you for the clarification.
So does the funding request, does that have to be balanced, or is that more in April and May?
Okay. It can be a needs-based.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yep. So we are, the state says we must provide a needs-based request. We have two stages of, two stages of that. One is the draft funding request, and one is the school board's funding request. And then I'd also like to mention, all the materials that we've been talking about can be found on the budget website, k12albemoral.org/budget. And then we welcome questions, not just from the school board, but from the public as well, at budget@k12albemoral.org.
Do we have any idea what neighboring jurisdictions are doing with respect to the market compensation?
That is an item that we will present next week.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, just, this is less budget-oriented, this is more about the FLESS program. Just to give a slightly different perspective on that, I personally didn't go through that program, but I went through an elementary school that provided a second language education. And I think while it's definitely true that younger students have like a great ability to pick up a second language, with that, I think also needs to be acknowledged that it's the depth of practice that they put into it. As someone who also like learns a second language at home, that's the reason I have the skill I have in it, is because of the fact that I have day-to-day conversation in it. So if we do have these, say, Spanish lessons in elementary schools, if it is, it depends on like what type of education we're providing them, depending on whether if you're playing the same Spanish song video covering the weather every single class, or whether they actually are developing conversational skills to some extent. So I'd love to see whether, I don't know if this is tracked or not, but if there's some data on whether students that come out of this FLESS program go into high school and take like AP levels of this language, or at least something past like the third level of it, to see if there's really a big difference that it makes in what level of foreign language they pursue.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing the intensity of instruction, too. I mean, is it just, you know, 20 minutes once a week, you know? Because all of that matters.
I see Lauren McLean back there nodding her head, so we'll, we'll have follow-ups on that information. And I also noticed Dr. Hayes taking notes over there, so, thank you. Thanks for those questions. Thank you, Isabel.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Kumizawa? I think this is a great budget book, and a difficult year to do the budget, but I think you're going through the budget and all the different sections will be, is very helpful. Thank you. And your team.
Thank you, Maya.
Yes, my team, Bert Conover, spent many nights and hours making this work. Thank you.
Well, I, I didn't imagine you did it all by yourself, but thank you. Well, if this part of our agenda is through, we move on to other business. Do we have a motion on item 5.1?
Yes, Dr. Hiccup, would you? I move that the division does not reappoint employee A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Is there any discussion? It's a personnel matter, so we really can't, but-
Do you want to take a roll call, Cherley?
Do we want to take a roll call?
Do we need a roll call, Josh?
We should do a roll call.
We can. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Billman?
Abstain.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Pryor?
Yes.
Cherry Cuff?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 5.2, is there any other business by board members or the superintendent?
So I have two things. Does a board member have anything?
Okay.
First, I do want to apologize. I really appreciate the feedback from Ms. Billman earlier about our communication about FLESS, and then also about the Intensive Support Center. I did review both of those communications. I have no excuse, I just got hung up in the content and the desire to be proactive and failed to acknowledge that. Those, those are both items that the board will ultimately need to approve through the budget. So I apologize to you, apologize to all the families, the community. We will do better next time on, on, on that, and I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
The other thing I just want to, and I did provide a handout to the board. I want to clarify a recent public statement regarding eighth-grade math achievement in Albemarle County Public Schools. A recent narrative published in a local newspaper stated that in ACPS, only half or 50% of all eighth-grade students pass the Standards of Learning Mathematics test. This claim is misleading, as it only accounts for students who took the Math 8 SOL, and it excludes our eighth graders enrolled in advanced math courses, which is most of our eighth graders every year. To provide a complete picture, in the spring of 2024, 949 eighth-grade students took a Math SOL test, with an overall pass rate of 71.7%. While 43.3% of these students took the Math 8 exam, so less than half, the majority, 56.7%, were enrolled in advanced coursework, including Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. These students performed exceptionally well, with a 93.7% pass rate, including 90, more than 90% in Algebra I, 96% in Geometry, and 100% in Algebra II. This level of achievement reflects our students' readiness and hard work in engaging in rigorous coursework early, and the strength of our teachers, and their preparation, and their hard work, and the instructional and family support that the students receive. Commitment to math success extends beyond middle school, our commitment. Among the graduating class of 2024, 45.8% completed at least one college-level math course before earning their diploma through advanced placement, dual enrollment classes, or the international baccalaureate programs. At the same time, we recognize that not all students have had equitable access to advanced coursework. In alignment with our mission, ACPS strives to eliminate disproportionality in math opportunities based on race, class, gender, and special capacities. While we are really proud of our many students' progress, we still have much work to do to ensure that every learner has the support and opportunity to succeed at the highest levels. ACPS remains committed to transparency and accuracy in reporting student performance. We appreciate the community's trust in us as a reliable source of information, and welcome continued conversations on how to expand access to and success in mathematics for all of our students. Thank you for the time in reading that.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Any other business from school board members? Just want to mention that Mr. Page and I represented the school board members, school board this week at the groundbreaking ceremony for Center II, which means we've had two groundbreakings in the month of February, for opening in August of 2027. So what we're looking at is building about 132,000 square feet of new, flexible, modern educational space. So, so when you drive by, just know that it's going to be beautiful in a few months, in 18 months. Do you want to add anything?
The only thing is that they went on, what, about two weeks ago, the weather was nowhere near as favorable as it was yesterday. So there was a major difference between the two.
It was about a 40-degree temperature difference.
Just some updates from Albemarle High School. Currently, we're wrapping up Black History Month, and our VSU has done a great job this month of organizing some great events. I know just this week, we had Chihamba dancers at our schools and teaching some other members of our school community how to dance, as well as our school's robotics team Firefly is heading to states this weekend.
Outstanding news. Thank you.
Good luck on that.
Is there any further news? Is there any further news with that? At 9:22, this meeting is adjourned.